...here in Derby and throughout the valley at the heart of economic revitalization in the valley is not only figuring out a way to continue the renaissance that's happening in a lot of these downtowns, but to continue to try to rehab a lot of these old brownfields that are the heart and soul of a lot of these communities, given the industrial past and present, but need a lot of work. And Rich and George and I, although we're different parties, have worked really closely together to try to bring some of those dollars back here. And then that rail line, which has just been frankly the bane of my existence for a long time, because it's one of these things where if you build it, they will come. And I've been arguing until my face is blue with Republican and Democratic governors that if they put resources into the Waterbury Ranch Line, they will see people flock to it, and they will see redevelopment and residential housing all along it. And we now have a new opportunity with a new governor to make that case again. But I occasionally do these ride-alongs on the Waterbury Line where I ask everybody who represents the valley to come and ride the line. We invite the press to try to show people how good it can be. So something that we work really closely together on as well. Thank you all for being here. I'm really pleased to have a second term in the Senate, and I thank people for coming out in big numbers in November. And I've pledged to do this job the same way in the second six years that I did in the first six years, and that's to try to be as present as I can, try to listen as much as I can, and try to make this as interactive as I can. As many of you know, I do town halls like this as often as I can, but I also try to find new ways to listen to people. I've had this practice the last few years of walking across the state, taking a week during the summer and walking from one end to the other. I often will just set up a card table outside a supermarket on a weekend to just catch people coming in and out. I try to do online town halls, teletown halls. You know, I get it, not everybody is going to be happy with the votes I cast. A lot of issues these days are 50/50, but I want to make sure that you have an opportunity to tell me what's on your mind and hear directly from me. And I think it's especially important to do it right now when you've got a real crisis in Washington, you've got a quarter of the government that is shut down. I think it's basically more important for members of the Congress to be out here doing town halls at this moment. From what I understand, I'm the only U.S. Senator that's actually having a town hall this weekend, and that doesn't sound right. It sounds like this is the time when we should all be out here talking to you guys. So let me talk to -- so I want to reserve the majority of time for questions, and I'll answer as many of them as I can in the time that we have in this building. I want to thank the staff here for opening up this beautiful building on a weekend for us. So I'm going to give you just some thoughts on some top-line issues, and then I want to open it up to you to give me some questions, and we'll hit as many as we can, maybe not everybody, but we'll try to get as many as we can in the next hour and a half. So honestly, I want to start with the news of the day, and that is today we are in the longest shutdown in the history of the country. Granted, it's only about a quarter of the government, but that's still 800,000 federal employees and some really important agencies that aren't open for business, with the exception of folks that are deemed essential. That's TSA, that's the FBI, that's the Department of Agriculture, that's the food inspection offices, the IRS are all closed down. And we're lucky that we got some patriots that continue to show up for work even though they're not getting paid. I was just over at Tweed Airport yesterday to say thank you to the maintenance workers and the TSA workers that are there. We passed a piece of legislation on Thursday night. I was down on the floor of the Senate trying to arrange for this legislation's passage, and we did pass it that guarantees that everybody will get back pay when the government is reopened. And so that's helpful, but there are an awful lot of people who are working paycheck to paycheck, and just knowing that you're going to get paid at the end of this, whenever it is, hopefully in a couple of days, doesn't help you get through the rest of the time that you're not getting paid. So never mind the danger to all of us. You know, there are terminals that are closing down, there is food that's not being inspected. It's getting riskier and riskier. You know, my position on this is pretty simple. I just think we should reopen the government without preconditions as soon as possible. And we had come to that. And I just, I've been through a few of these in the short time that I've been in Congress, and they all end the same way. The party that is sort of trying to get something out of the shutdown, the party that's making the demand in order to open up the government, eventually relents and realizes that that's not the right way to conduct business. And I hope that that's the decision that the President makes at some point over the course of the next week, that I get it, that he really wants to build this wall. He's been very clear about it since the campaign. But I don't agree that he should hold the government hostage in order to get something that Congress has historically not been willing to give him. We had an agreement at the end of last year in December to keep the government open for two months so that we could continue to talk about the President's insistence on more money for the construction of a physical barrier. And every single Republican voted for that bill to keep the government open and operating until February. And when the President reversed his course, and he initially said he'd sign that bill, and then over the weekend he said he wouldn't sign the bill, then unfortunately, all the Republicans changed their position as well. And so we know that my colleagues in the Senate are all on record having support in keeping government open. And I don't think that just because the President changed his position, that that means every Senate Republican should change their position as well. And so I'm hopeful that they will come around and say, "Let's get the government open, let's get people back to work, let's get TSA paid, and then let's sit down and try to see what we can do to satisfy the President's demands on the border." And so we're going to continue to try to press that case. Here's my work. My worry is that if the President gets his way here and ultimately uses this shutdown, uses these furloughed employees in order to get his political campaign promise filled, interesting though, if you remember though, his promise was not that the taxpayers would pay for it.
Mexico.
His promise was that Mexico was going to pay for it. But let's set that aside. If he gets the taxpayers to pay for this by shutting down the government, I fear he will do it again and again, and that we will just be back in this position again later this year when the budget runs out in September and the President says, "I'm shutting down the government unless I get X, Y, or C." I just don't think that that's how you should conduct business in life or in government. And so that's why we are saying, "Open up the government with no preconditions, no strings attached," and then we'll have a conversation about security. And my hope is that Republicans who are beginning to realize that this is insane, the way that we've done this, are going to come our way and join Democrats who have said, "Just open it up, open it up." Let me just touch on a couple of other issues, because I don't want to have only a conversation about the shutdown, even though that is dominating the headlines, deservedly so. I want to tell you a little bit about what my agenda is for this coming year, because I hope it comes from the conversations that I've had here in Connecticut. You know, first and foremost, I continue to worry about this state's economy, and I continue to worry about this state not having enough good jobs that pay good wages and pensions and healthcare. And so there's a lot of different ways that I, as a member of Congress, can focus on that, but I've chosen to spend a lot of my time working on the manufacturing economy. And what I know is that there's a manufacturing renaissance happening in this country. And the question is really whether Connecticut is going to receive the bounty of that. We know we have the opportunity to grow thousands of jobs in and around manufacturing, not just the jobs in the factories themselves, but all of the jobs that surround manufacturing. When you create one factory job, you tend to create two and a half more jobs in the rest of the economy because there's a big ripple effect. And aerospace work is booming. Electric boat and submarine business, because of the contracts that Dick and I, Rosa, have gotten and Joe Courtney have gotten, is booming. Sikorsky's in the middle of ramping up a brand-new helicopter program. And the crisis in Connecticut manufacturing is not that we don't have enough work, the crisis right now is we don't have enough workers. And so we've got to get some more federal money back here to train more kids and more adults so that they can get really good-paying jobs in manufacturing. So one of my big missions in 2019 is to try to bring more federal dollars back to Connecticut so that we can train more people to fill those jobs, because if we don't, that work will go somewhere else. It'll go overseas, or it'll go to another state. And so the manufacturing economy, to me, is not just the future of this state. You know, my grandfather and great-grandfather both had jobs at Fasner Ball Baring in Britain, Connecticut. I know it's the future of this state as well. Number two, I'm really worried about what's going on with healthcare. I'm really worried about the President's attacks on the Affordable Care Act. I get it, the Affordable Care Act's not perfect, but you can't throw it out without having a plan to replace it. And the challenge in the courts right now that the President has launched could end the Affordable Care Act overnight with no replacement. That would mean 200,000 people in Connecticut would lose insurance, and everybody with a pre-existing condition would have their rates jacked up. And so I'm going to spend a lot of time this year trying to protect what we have and then trying to build on it, because the fact of the matter is, I'm glad the Affordable Care Act is helping a lot of people, but prices are still way too high, and the for-profit healthcare companies are continuing to get away with murder. And the drug companies are at the top of that list. Drug prices are spiraling, drug industries are using crises in order to drive prices up, take Narcan, for instance, which is the drug that brings you back to life from a heroin overdose. The price of that has spiraled 400% as demand has gone up for it. So we've got to get tough with the drug companies, and that's a potential for agreement with President Trump. President Trump released kind of a blueprint at the end of last year that nobody paid much attention to, that starts to let the federal government dictate prices a little bit more than we do today with the drug industry. And I'm, you know, listen, I've said from the beginning, I'm going to fight him where I think he's doing something bad for Connecticut, but I'll work with him if I think he's doing something good. Maybe we can find some common ground to take on these high drug prices in 2019. So I want to protect the Affordable Care Act and the coverage and the protection for people with pre-existing conditions, but I also want to attack these prices, and that's going to be a big part of my work. I sit on the Health Committee. Let me just mention two more things quickly, and then I'll turn it over to you. One is the issue of gun violence. You know, obviously, that this is something that I live and breathe, having gone through the horror of Sandy Hook personally that day, and then frankly, just spending way too much time with victims of gun violence in every community in this state, whether it be on the streets of Hartford, suicides, accidental shootings that are happening everywhere else. What I want is what 97% of Americans want, and frankly, what pretty much every gun owner I run into in Connecticut wants, which is just a universal background check law that says everybody's got to prove they're not a criminal or they're not seriously mentally ill before they buy a gun. And you know, most everybody that's bought a gun in this state bought it at a gun store and went through a background check, and it wasn't that big a deal. And so all I want in 2019 is for the whole country to do what Connecticut does. And what we know is that Connecticut is a lot safer place from gun violence than a lot of other states are because of our background checks law. States that have background checks have 40% fewer gun crimes than states that don't have background checks. And that bill is going to pass the House of Representatives this year. I'm the primary author of it in the Senate. It's harder to pass the Senate because we have very few Republican sponsors for it, but it seems just wild to me that a proposal that gets 97% support in the country, and like nothing gets 97% support in America, right? Like puppies don't get 97% support in America, but background checks do. And so I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to get that passed or further along in the process than ever before, and if we do, it'll save lives. And then let me just sort of tease a subject that maybe folks will ask about in questions. I sit on the Foreign Relations Committee as well, and really, when you think about it, your primary responsibility as a member of the federal government is to protect this country, is to protect this country from attack. And I think a lot about how our foreign policy in the last, you know, in the last two years, but I'd argue in part in the last 10 years, has missed the mark sometimes when it comes to the best ways to protect this country. I've been very concerned for a long time about a civil war on the other side of the planet in a country called Yemen. And people sometimes say, "Well, Chris, why do you spend so much time worrying about the Yemen civil war, right? What does that have to do with us?" Well, inside Yemen is the most lethal arm of Al Qaeda, the arm that actually has the most clear intent to hit the United States again. And this civil war that the United States is participating in, we side with one side of the civil war. As the civil war goes on and on and on, Al Qaeda gets stronger and stronger and stronger, as does ISIS inside Yemen. And they have the greatest capability to hit the United States. In addition, the civil war has killed tens of thousands of children, civilians have been bombed and hurt. It's the worst humanitarian disaster in the world today. And I have been sort of the leading voice in the Congress to pull the United States out of that war. And I've done that because it's hurting our national security, but I also just don't think the United States should be part of any war that's intentionally causing humanitarian catastrophe if it isn't in our national security benefit. And so I really worry about our policy in the Middle East, which seems overly reliant on military intervention and doesn't really understand the complex nature of that region. And so I don't like the way that the President announced this pullout of troops in Syria. You don't do it without a plan for what comes next. You don't do it without some assurances to protect the people you were supposed to be protecting. But at the same time, I've never believed that we should be involved in endless wars in the Middle East. I also think that we need to learn our lessons from Iraq and understand the limitations of what our brave, capable men and women can do in very complicated political situations over there. And so I watch the Middle East really carefully and do that from a perch on the Foreign Relations Committee, primarily from the perspective of trying to protect America, and I don't know that we've done that in the way that we should. So I continue to be really open to hearing from you in every way possible. I hope for people that are savvy at all the technology, that you follow me on Twitter and Facebook, and I do a lot of this stuff myself, and I check it myself. I hope that you call in right in our office when you think that we need to hear from it, and really appreciate the chance to come down and kind of debrief with you a little bit at an important time. Here's what we're going to do. We've got two microphones on either side of the room here. If you guys, if you have questions and you want to line up at the microphones and ask what hopefully is a short question, so we can get in as many as we can, I will try to give as short answers as possible so that we can get through as much in as short a period of time as we can. And we'll just sort of alternate going from that mic to that mic and get through as much as we can. So just tell us your name and what town. And everybody doesn't have to all get up at once, you can kind of fill in on it shorter, but we'll try to get through as many of these as we can. Just tell us your name, your first name, and what town you're from, and then go ahead. So.
Senator.
Yes.
Mayor. Real quick one for, let's go back to the state of Connecticut.
Yep, tolls.
What's your leaf on them? Do you think it's going to hurt us with the highway money coming in? If you do, one way or the other, whether Route 8 and Fair Parkway, the statewide?
Yeah, so tolls won't, so we're the only state in New England that doesn't toll some part of the road that comes through, and we wouldn't be penalized at the federal level. Here's my position on it. Listen, I'm fairly agnostic as to how the state decides to come up with the money. I just know that you can't build new roads and new rail if you don't have the money to do it. And so whether the state wants to put in tolls, whether it wants to look at the gas tax, whether it wants to come up with some other revenue source, it's going to have to make, the state legislature, the governor's going to have to make some decision to find new money to put into transportation, because our chief asset in this state is being so close to Boston and New York. That's why people want to be here, because they can get people from their company and their workers back and forth to those enormous metro economic centers, but that's getting increasingly hard. Connecticut, historically, dramatically underfunds transportation. You know, the federal government pays for most of your highway improvements here, but what the federal government says is that if you want the federal money, you've got to come up with at least 20%. Now, most states come up with way more than 20%. Most states put up 40%, 50%. Before the Malloy administration, Connecticut put up 20, just put up 20, that was it. And the rest of the money for transportation in Connecticut was 80% federal. Malloy got that number up to sort of 30, 35, but still, it's way below the national averages. So listen, I get it, I pay the same taxes as everybody else does. I don't like paying any more than I have to, but I also know that if I'm putting money into roads, I'm probably going to earn that money back, because the jobs that'll be created from investing in our infrastructure is probably worth my investment. So whether it's tolls or gas tax, I don't care. I just will support any realistic plan to come up with some new money. So, go for it.
Hi, I'm John Dearborn from Ensignia, and I'd like to have you expand on, you were talking about the Affordable Care Act. Would you prefer, if I was going to Universal Health Care, if so, how much money we have to pay in taxes to accomplish that? Obviously, it seems like the best way to go is universal health care.
Yeah, so I think it's important to remember that in general, this country pays twice as much per person for healthcare than any other high-income country in the world. And we pay for it differently than those other countries pay for it. We pay for it through lower wages, we pay for it in premiums, other countries pay for it in taxes, but when you look at the overall amount of money we're spending on healthcare, we're spending twice as much. And when you look at outcomes, I know that everybody thinks America's got the best healthcare system in the world, but that's not actually what the data says. The data says that life expectancy, hospitalization rates, infection rates, all that stuff here is, we're in the middle to the lower part of the pack. So I think it's probably time to think about some major restructuring of our healthcare system. Here's what I propose. I've got a bunch of colleagues led by Bernie Sanders who support a single payer healthcare system by which you say, "We're going to outlaw private insurance and next day, everybody's going to be part of the Medicare program." I have a little different idea. What I say, and I put in a bill, a very detailed bill, to do this with a bunch of other colleagues, what I think we should do is we should open up the Medicare program to everybody, not just individuals, but businesses as well. And the Medicare program should price their program exactly what it costs and let it compete with private health insurance. And I think what you'd find, actually, I know what you'd find, is that Medicare would cost less, and people would choose for themselves whether they want to stay in private insurance or take a Medicare benefit. And I think what you'd allow for is consumers to make that decision, right? Whether we want to be in Medicare or we want to be in private insurance. I think that would be a much more natural transition to a Medicare-for-all system rather than having the government say, "Our next day, you're moving from this plan to that plan." And I think we'd end up saving a lot of money by doing that, because Medicare is the most cost-efficient health plan in the country, because it has no profit motivation, it doesn't pay a lot of CEOs and administrators, it just takes your money and it pays clients, which is kind of what health insurance should do. So that's a longer answer than I had to give, but that's my take on it. I'll give you shorter answers.
Anne from Bethany, you actually answered a lot of what I had to say with this question, but as a psychiatric nurse practitioner, I really appreciate the work you've done on the Health Committee, because a lot of the Affordable Care Act affects my patients. Can we expect, you know, with your continuing work on the opioid crisis, can we expect to see more from you this session dealing with the mental health?
Yeah, so this is my passion project. You have to sort of have focuses in the Senate and in Congress, and my focus has been on mental illness and addiction. I'll tell you, one of, I just sat with Lamar Alexander, the Republican chairman of the Health Committee, two days ago, and I came to talk to him about what one of my biggest priorities is going to be this year. One of my biggest priorities in the healthcare space, aside from what I said before, is going to be getting insurance companies to pay for more addiction and malhealth services, because you get healthcare, and your insurance card, and you know this because you're a practitioner, will say that you have an addiction or mental health benefit, but then when you try to get the insurance company to pay for it, they put up all of these enormous hurdles in front of you getting reimbursed. And that's a lot of the reason why we have this horrible addiction crisis, because families can't get their loved one into care. And we actually have a law on the books which says insurance companies can't do that. You actually can't put up bigger hurdles to mental health and addiction care than you do to, you know, somebody that's got a cancer diagnosis or somebody that's got a bum knee, and yet they get away with it. And so I've, the Trump administration is, the Secretary of Labor, who oversees a lot of this, he's very interested in this and doing more on it. And so I'm going to try to convince some of my Republican colleagues in the Senate to help me pass some legislation that gives the administration new powers to crack down on insurers that are abusing that law. So that'll be one place that I'm going to really focus on this year, but thank you for your advocacy on that.
Chris, also from Ensignia. I'd like to start just saying it's a pleasure to be here, sir. Thank you very much. My question is, if in the next couple of months or years, a report's to release that demonstrates that the malfeasance of some of our federal officials, some of our legislators, is in fact criminal in nature, would you support pursuing prosecution of these officials even after they have left office? Or would you instead support President Obama's position that we should move on and let the country heal?
So to the extent you're sort of, I get you're being a little careful in how you ask the question, but to the extent you're asking, I'll be less careful if you're asking a question about the investigation that's ongoing with respect to President Trump and his campaign's potential involvement in manipulating the 2016 election. I'm just really careful, and I know this won't be helpful to you, to not sort of answer hypothetical questions about that investigation. If there ever were to be an impeachment trial in the Senate, I would be on the jury, and I don't want to sort of go down rabbit holes of saying ahead of time what I would do with this set of facts versus that set of facts. My belief is that Mueller is not going to indict the President. I think, my belief is that Mueller is going to present a set of facts to Congress and let us make the decision. And while I don't know enough about, you know, the law surrounding indicting Presidents while they're in office to come to a legal conclusion, I will say that it's probably preferable to let the political process play out. The Constitution does put in, the Constitution does have in it a process for a President to be removed, and that process is the impeachment process. I haven't come to a conclusion, because I haven't seen the report that Mueller will file, but I guess I would prefer for Congress to be able to do its work. Whatever happens after any President is in office, I think is a question for the courts, not a question for Congress.
Hi, I'm Charlotte from Shelton, and it's kind of an offshoot of the other, you know, latest question. I co-chair the Health Committee of Connect, and you're familiar with Connect for congregations organized for New Connecticut. Thank you for your work on gun safety. The offshoot, as a practicing nurse of 43 years, it was alarming to hear that we're kind of the worst state in the Union for out-of-network psychiatric services, and also psychiatrists are paid 49% less than any other physician specialty. So when people look at gun safety and think of mental health, we don't have the resources in this state. So as one of, 1 in 67 voters in the state is a nurse who are very strong on mental health parity, but the Bill 384 did not pass last legislative session with the insurance companies not wanting to report these services. So do you have any recommendations from a federal level when we're going, are coalitions going to work again this year with the new, hopefully, a more responsive insurance commission to this big issue on mental health parity? I mean, if you have diabetes, you should get the same coverages if you have mental illness.
Well, we should just work closely together, because that's what I was referring to before about the federal movement on parity. We passed a big bill in 2018 called the Mental Health Reform Act that I worked with many of you on. I wrote it with Bill Cassidy, a conservative Republican from Louisiana. And in that bill, we made some big new steps on parity at the federal level. I'm asking Lamar Alexander to support some additional steps in this next Congress, but if you've got state initiatives that you'd like me to be helpful with, I'd love to do this. Like I said, this is something that I've cared about for a very long time. And your identification of the Medicaid rate issue, really, really important. So this is sort of big-picture stuff, but you know, everybody wants to know, right? Why are my premiums on the private side continuing to go up and up and up and up? Well, one of the reasons is because Medicaid in particular and Medicare don't pay doctors anything, and so the doctors make up for it. And so the doctors make up for it by negotiating higher prices with the private plans. And so we've got a real crisis because we just cost shifted a lot of our healthcare from the Medicaid program over to private insurers, and we have a lot of mental health professionals who weren't even take Medicaid because it doesn't pay enough. And so we've got to, we've got to find a way to get more, to get higher reimbursements and that. That's a state question and a federal question, but we should work on the state parity legislation together.
Good morning, sir.
Morning.
My name's Sean, I'm from Danbury. I'm one of the essential employees that's affected by the shutdown. Every five years, I have to have a scrutiny, okay? So just like everybody, every other law enforcement officer, I'm there. So with this impact, as long as the shutdown lasts, we're going to have impacts that go up to five years from here. Because I have to clear that, so does everybody else. Well, if our tarnish, if our credit is tarnished, what protection do we have? The second part, with the Taft, Taft Act passed in 1947, we can't speak. We're not allowed to demonstrate without recourse of legal action. Small verbiage would have ended this a long time ago because we all closed the doors, which none of us wanted to. We tried to be, we tried to